Good afternoon. We'll call this meeting of the New Ulm Planning Commission to Order. It's Thursday, December 19th, 4:30 PM. First item on the business is, uh, the agenda is the election of officers.
Okay, if I made in advance of that, um, you know, the Planning Commission is to elect officers at your December meeting, and that's something that is written into the city code. So that's why we're doing it at this time. At other times, other organizations might do it at their January meeting. Um, so there are, currently, there are three officers. Chair is Jim Hogan, the vice chair is Larry Mack, and the secretary is Rod Carnet. Mr. Mack and Mr. Carnet will be members of the Planning Commission in 2020. Mr. Hogan has served two terms and will be leaving the commission at the end of this year, and as a result, the new chair must be elected. The elected officers will take their positions at the January meeting. So...
Okay, do we know, there's another replacement? Do we know who they are, or...
Um, we do not know who the replacement is for, for your position, no.
Okay. And we can't nominate anybody that's not here, so we're looking at...
Well, I, I don't know that there's a, that's happened in the past with this group, so I don't know that.
I'll put it this way. It's my recommendation that we don't nominate anybody that is not here unless they specifically request it, that they would like to be nominated for. So with that, let's start out with open for nominations for chair.
I'd nominate Larry for chair.
Second that.
Would Larry accept?
I will accept that.
Okay, we have a nomination, or nominations, any other nominations? If not, nominations closed. All in favor of Larry for chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we go to co-chair.
Right, vice chair.
Vice chair. We have a nomination for vice chair. That, in the past, that was Larry. So we need a new one. This is a good opportunity for you to step to the plate, and you've all done an excellent job. You can all do it.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem either, whatever. You want to do it, or you want me to do it, or...
I nominate Jeff for vice chair. I'd second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Jeff being co-chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd accept it.
Larry and I heard you say you did. Okay, then what else? We need a secretary.
Secretary.
What are the duties for the secretary?
Just sign the minutes.
Sign the minutes.
They do the minutes, but then you have...
Yeah, I see that. Sounds like you're interested. That would be fine.
I'd nominate Kate for secretary.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Are you interested? Okay. Does that work better? Okay. All right, all in favor of Kate being secretary?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we have our officers for the January meeting, right? Moving on down the line, um, minutes, we did the minute, we have min, approved the minutes from the last meeting? You get a motion for that?
Okay, this will be minutes of the October 31st and the November 21st.
We can do them both, right?
You can do them at the same time, yeah.
I'll offer a motion to approve the October 31st, 2019 minutes and the November 21st, 2019 minutes.
I'd second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second approving the minutes for the October 31st and November 21st meetings as presented. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We go to 4.1. As a public hearing, consider the application of Donald Sanderson requesting a variance to allow a utility shed to be located three feet from the north property line on the property located at 1600 North Broadway and legally described as lots 13 and 14, block 82, north of Center Street. The required setback is 10 feet.
All right. The applicant here is Donald Sanderson. The property owner is DJ Sanderson LLC. The legal description is lot 13 and 14, block 82, north of Center, and the address is 1600 North Broadway. The deadline for a decision on this variance application is January 19th, 2019, or sorry, 2020. Currently, the land use designation for that area is business. Surrounding land uses to this property include business to the north, the south, the west, and then low density residential to the east, so behind this property. Its zoning designation is the B2 Service Business District. Surrounding zoning includes the B2 to the north, south, and west, and then R2, single and two-family residential, to the east. Currently, the site is used as an office. Other current area uses include businesses to the north, residential to the east, residential and business uses to the south, and then business uses and a vacant property to the west. There was a notice, a public hearing notice, published in the journal on December 7th, 2019. So for the property, or the project description, the property owner has placed already a 12 by 20 pre-manufactured storage building on his property, three feet from the north property line and 10 feet from the existing building to the south. The purpose of this building is to house property maintenance equipment, things such as snow blowers, lawn mowers, that type of thing. Building code requires that if a detached structure were to be placed closer than 10 feet from an existing building, that a one-hour, that one-hour fire protection needs to be installed on both the new building and the existing building. So where that, where that shed currently sits, if it were closer than 10 feet, he would need it on, let's call it, the south wall of that utility shed and the north wall of his existing building. Additionally, if the building were to be placed five feet or closer to the property line, which would be the south, one-hour fire protection needs to be installed on that side of the building abutting that property line. The property owner placed this building at this location to meet fire separation from the existing building to the south. He does plan on installing one-hour fire protection on the, the north side of the building abutting the property line to the north. A little bit more, the property is located at the intersection of Broadway and 16th North. The property consists of two 50 by 165-foot lots for a total property size of 100 by 165, or 1600, or 16,500 square feet. Section 9.10 subdivision 5C of the city code requires that there should be a side yard on each side of a building, each yard having a width of not le, not less than 10 feet. So on this property, to the north, south, and east property lines, there would be a requirement of a 10-foot building setback. Where the building, the new utility shed is sitting currently, there is a distance of 10 feet, 2 inches to his existing building, and then the distance between that new storage building and the north property line is 3 feet. This property consists of a main structure for business purposes, and the remainder of the lot is for patron parking. This also used to be an old gas station location. In 2009, a previous tenant was granted a permit to place a similar style building in the same location as Mr. Sanderson's new building. When the previous tenant left the property, they also took with them that utility shed. The new storage shed is on skids and can be moved if required. The owner has stated also in his application that at this property location, there have been traffic flow issues and vehicles entering and exiting his property. He notes that if he were to move the building out further into the parking lot area, it may create more of a traffic safety concern at that intersection. So the Planning Commission has, we listed a couple alternative actions. One would be that not allow the reduced side yard back, side yard setback, or lessen the variance amount. We did provide some supporting data. Attachment 1 is the variance application. Attachment 2 is the map showing the location of the property. Attachment 3 is the zoning map. Attachment 4 is the site plan. That's the one that shows the location of that new utility shed. And then attachment 5 are ground level photos that staff took of that site, and you can see how close that is to the north property line. So Mr. Sanderson, the applicant, is here, and if he would like to say anything to the Planning Commission, or if the Planning Commission would have any questions for him, I think he's willing to take them. Staff would recommend approval of this variance for the following reasons. The purpose of this new storage building is consistent with our comp plan and the use of this property. The purpose of the storage building is for business equipment needed to maintain the property and not for personal use by the property owner. The placement of this storage building does not change the essential character of the neighborhood, and this site will continue to be used for commercial purposes. We do recommend, staff recommends, one condition, that the applicant would install a one-hour fire protection on the wall of the new storage building abutting the north property line. That's it for the staff report.
Could you refresh me on what is really involved with the one-hour fire protection? Is that material that needs to be put on the outside or inside of the structure?
Be put on the inside, two layers of 5A sheet rock would, would comply.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone that would wish to speak on the matter would, now would be the time to step to the mic and fill us in. It's up to you. State your name and address.
Don Sanderson, and the business address is 1600 North Broadway Street, and residential is 412 South Washington Street. Uh, I don't know what I can add. I did talk to the landowners on the north side of New Ulm Monument, and just wanted to make sure that they understood that it is closer to their lot line than normal. And I listened, the general manager, I visited with her, and she said, "Well, I love your building. It's a nice addition there." And she said, "I didn't know you were in, not in compliance," but she said, "If there's any issues, just, you know, let them talk to her." Uh, Don Binger, who took over for Kenny Drexler, he's a stone setter, and he's the one that you, I don't know if you have pictures of the bunkers that are on the north side of it there. He is using those bunkers, and quite honestly, I get more gravel and sand coming in my lot from them than I think I would have going over the other way. But anyway, we, I visited with Don, and he too said that he had no issues with it sitting there. And so I just wanted to make sure that my neighbors were aware of what I was doing and were okay with it as well. But you'll notice that the, I don't know if there's photos, I'm trying to make it so it doesn't really stand out. The colors on the shed are very similar to the colors of the building right now. In fact, I got a remodel project going on in the spring, and we will be doing the exact same colors of the shed on the building, existing building, so that everything will look consistent there, as well as some landscaping that we'll be doing on the north side of the building eventually this spring. So the shingles are identical shingles that were on the existing building, the mansard of the existing building are the same shingles that are on the new. So trying to make everything to look like it just was already there on it, but we needed it. Kenny Drexler did my snow removal. He retired, and it was just easier for me to do my own snow removal. The person who was doing the lawn care retired, and I thought, why not? You know, for what I was paying for doing all of that, I can do it myself and pay for the tractor. So I, I needed to place and store the tractor permanently, and that was my answer to doing it. So I don't know if you have other questions of me?
The staff's recommendation is to have the condition with that one-hour fire protection. You understand what that is, and your building can be modified to meet those needs?
Sure, yeah. No, that's not a problem. If we need to install that, we can do it. I got a contractor I work with, and he'd be more than glad to help me with it. In fact, he's going to be doing some things in January on the inside, and I'll just tell him to add that to it. So that's, that wouldn't be a problem.
Anyone else? Then we'll close the public hearing. Uh, one more question for the staff. Obviously, it's going to be a while before anything happens, before he can do that. Is there a problem? Does he need any permit to leave it there in the meantime?
For the fire, as far as the fire protection goes?
Right, and it's as soon as we can get it done.
Okay. So I have thoughts?
I guess I'm fine with it. You know, we've granted it one other time in the past, and the other business shed, and, you know, we've got a new shed in place, and it's going to match complementary to the current buildings, so I'm okay with it.
Nice-looking building.
Yep.
Good location for it.
I'll make the move, motion to approve the variance.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the variance with the condition, I assume?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, that will go to the city council first Tuesday of 2020, whenever date that is. Okay? And we shall go down the line. Consider the approval of preliminary plot for the Milford Heights 3rd Edition.
Okay. The applicant and the property owner in this particular case, it's Al Peller on behalf of S&amp;P Development LLC. The current legal description of the property is lots 1 through 7, block 2, Milford Heights 2nd Edition. Street address is 630 to 654 Waru Drive. The current comprehensive planned land use designation is medium-density residential. Surrounding comprehensive planned land use designations are to the northwest and south, low-density residential, and to the east, medium-density. The zoning designation is R3, multiple-family residence district. Surrounding zoning is to the north and south, R1, single-family residence district. To the east, R3, and to the west, R2, which is single and two-family residence district. Current site use, it's vacant. Area site uses, to the north is vacant, to the east it's vacant and townhomes, to the south, single-family dwellings, and to the west, twin homes. Notice, in this particular case, none is required. Project description, the property is generally located east of Waru Drive, south of Beinhorn Street, and north of 5th North Streets, County State Aid 27. Milford Heights 2nd Edition was platted in August of 2017. The property was originally platted to allow for the construction of townhomes. The new plat would consist of four lots, and two sets of twin homes would be located on the property. And by two sets, what I mean, it's two buildings with four units. Twin homes are a permitted use in the R3 zoning district. The property to be platted totals 0.92 acres. Utilities are located in Waru Drive, and services have been extended into the seven existing lots. Comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. Attached is a copy of the preliminary plat. There's an aerial photograph of the property. There is a copy of the zoning map for this area. And finally, there are ground level photographs taken from a variety of different vantage points. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat with conditions, since it complies with city code requirements. The recommended conditions would include the following. Number one is to pay the plating fee of $270. That's a base fee of $150, and $30 per lot. Secondly, provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. Third, we need to determine the status of the three unused utility services located in Waru Drive. Typically, the city would like to see those services disconnected. The reason for that policy is that 20 years from now, if they spring a leak, who's responsible for correcting that problem? So we like to address that issue now rather than waiting for something to happen. We have to determine the need for zero setback variances. Actually, we have gotten a response from the city attorney on that, and they will need to apply for those variances. And then we need to determine whether it's going to be necessary to amend the development agreement for the project. On another matter, the property owner previously paid a parkland dedication fee, and the plat does not increase the number of new lots, therefore, no additional fee is required. And then potential motions are provided, one to recommend and one to deny. That concludes the staff report.
So when we do this, there's a, on the conditions, there's a lot of things to be They have to be listed as part of the conditions if we recommend approval.
You would list them, I guess, as the way that they are written in the staff report. I think some of those items will be addressed prior to the city council meeting, so we would include maybe the answers to some of those items in that staff report to the council.
So I guess that, that makes a little sense to me, because just the saying "determine" that's a pretty open book, but you're indicating that there should be answers for them by the time it gets to them.
We need to determine the answer.
Okay. Okay, what do you wish, those folks?
So there's extra utility services because of, that was going to be townhomes, and that would have required...
So there were seven services extended into the property. Now there are going to be four units, so that means we end up with three extra services. And so who assumes responsibility for those services is kind of the, the issue. And so this matter is going to involve the Public Utilities Commission, since they are the agency that, you know, enforces that particular requirement.
So that's why it's a little vague, because we don't know for sure they need to be removed.
Right. There's been previous discussions on that matter, and so I think we need to come to a resolution as to how it's going to be addressed. And I would expect by the time that this comes back for final plat approval, which would be at your January meeting, that we'll have answers to those questions.
Okay.
Well, kind of in, in the same vein, determining the need for zero setback variances, can you talk about that just a little bit more?
Well, this is a variance matter that has been required in the past any time a twin home is built, because you have, um, building walls located directly on the property line, and the city code requires a 10-foot setback. Later on in today's agenda, we're going to propose some solutions to that particular type of situation, because we've dealt with this for a period of time now, and we think we have an answer.
Thanks.
Okay, there we go.
I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary plot of Milford Heights 3rd Edition with conditions from the city and public utilities.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second recommending approval as the request with the conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, let's see, where are we going from here? There with me, I'll get there someplace somehow. I lost it again. Go down on the other one here. Okay, we're going to get some, receive information on the zero lot standards.
So unfortunately, this is a request that we did not have time to put the information into the agenda packet, and so we're, we are going to hand out paper copies of it, and John is going to do the presentation, and then we have a couple of drawings that we can show you to kind of help explain this matter.
Okay. So this is just information regarding potential zero lot line standards that staff has been discussing internally. So for a little bit of background, twin homes, townhomes, row houses have all been being constructed in New Ulm much more frequently over the last 10 to 15 years. And currently, our, our city zoning standards require a 10-foot side yard setback from lot lines in those R2 and R3 zoning district. Therefore, that requires a variance from side yard setbacks anytime one of these structures are being constructed. Additionally, when these projects are proposed on lots at street intersections, oftentimes the lot intersection, the lot at the intersection needs to be increased in size to accommodate the two front yard setbacks, therefore causing the adjoining interior lot to be of a narrower Staff is proposing that the code take into account the unique character of these construction, the construction of these types of homes and create kind of separate zoning standards to address the situations that often come up. Staff has researched zoning codes from seven different Minnesota communities, similar in size and character to New Ulm, on the issues noted above. Now below are some ways that we could possibly address the side yard setback issue, lot width, and lot area issues when twin homes, townhomes, and row houses are being proposed. So the standards would apply in the R2 and R3 zoning districts, and the side yard setbacks for a single-family attached dwelling may be reduced to zero feet, provided that the following conditions would be satisfied. So when we say single-family attached, we're talking about just what David mentioned. It's actually a twin, a twin home would be two single-family residences, but they're attached by a common wall. Okay? Okay? The lot air, and as far as addressing the lot area, we have kind of two proposed solutions. A, being that the combined lot area and the bait, of the base lot, and individual lots can, and the individual lots contain the required amount of lot area per unit, as prescribed elsewhere in Chapter Nine.
Okay, if, if I can just note, so when we talk about the base lot, we're talking about this area. So, you'll note that we have inside of that area dwelling units, but we're not going to look at any, any individual areas. We're just going to take that outside line and determine if that area is adequate for eight dwelling units.
Okay, so that's one, that's one issue that's come up. Second one that we don't like to address in lot area is that B, all structures shall comply with the lot area requirements as provided in the zoning district regulations.
So, another type of development we see, you know, for townhomes is this type, where basically the property line runs from the street all the way to the alley. And so, we would deal with those on an individual lot basis.
Now, as far as addressing setbacks in these situations, we would ask that they'd require, "All unit lots shall meet all setback, all required setbacks from the boundaries of the base lot," so in that first photo.
So, the individual, we have, we have eight unit lots on each side here. So, this is a unit lot, and so, the setbacks in this kind of situation would be measured from the front of the residence to the front property line. So, that's how we would measure the front yard setback. So, we just want to clarify that that's how we would deal with setback issues, is from this property, from the property line of the unit to the, the base lot property line. There's a certain amount of a common sense element to this, but sometimes you have to put it in writing, so then there's, everybody knows what it is.
Also, for setbacks, we would propose D, that except for setbacks along the common property line, all other structures on the property shall comply with all other setback requirements as provided in the zoning, uh, district regulations. So, other than the lot line where they have a common wall, the rest of that structure and any other structures on the property would have to meet all of the setbacks in that district, zoning district. Additionally, there'd be a few other standards we'd like considered, one being that there's separate utility service, services furnished to each dwelling unit, that there would be a common party firewall up to new constructor, construction standards found in the International Building Code, that the applicant will record all required agreements, easements, and deed restrictions on the structures that abut the zero lot line, and that the property and structures will comply with all other relevant district regulations.
Now, I should note that we have not had an opportunity to review these requirements with the city attorney. You know, we do have a meeting scheduled with him next week, and so, we'll do so at that time.
So, what action do you want us to take? Just to receive it?
Well, we just want you to receive it. I guess, one decision that you could help us with is, is what, what is the next step? If the, we review it with the city attorney, do you want to see it come back to this body in draft form and review it, or do you want us to have the city attorney prepare it in ordinance form and conduct a public hearing and proceed in that direction? It's your decision.
I think that's the way it should go.
I will, a year or so, I, my recommendation is to do it in ordinance form.
I'm fine if they're going to ordinance form.
Okay.
Is, is it, there really, there's nothing in code or in our, that says that separate utility services shall be furnished and provided to each dwelling unit? We don't have that currently?
We do.
We do?
But we just want to, you know, make sure that there's no question about it.
Moving on, city council decisions concerning the planning commission.
Okay. At the December 3rd meeting, the city engineer presented his 2020 capital improvements program. The major elements in next year's construction program is redo Front Street from Third to Seventh South, Palmer Avenue is going to be extended to serve the National Guard site, and then Center Street from Broadway to Camel's Back is going to be a mill and overlay project. And the council received the report, and so, staff is going to be proceeding with preparing plans and specifications. Council approved the setback variance to Dale Buscher to Mike Kroll, and it allows a four-foot-ten-inch setback on 101 South Broadway, and that's for a building addition. It approved a conditional use permit to Brett Wheelborg on behalf of Wheelborg Enterprises, and that was to allow storage use at 1414 West Ridge Road, and that was to take place in existing building, and it was 10,000 square feet. They approved the recommendation of the planning commission to allow, to allow residential units, uses, excuse me, in the B2 zoning district, and that's in the downtown area. And they conducted the first consideration of that ordinance at that meeting, and then at the December 17th meeting, they had the second consideration and then voted in favor of the ordinance. Also, at the December 17th meeting, they adopted the 2020 city budget, and they also hired the consulting firm of ISG for engineering work on the roundabout, again, to serve the future National Guard site. And that concludes the report.
Okay. Anything from the heritage preservation people?
No items brought forward for a meeting this month.
Okay, then we're down to a recognition award. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, well, it's a secret. So, on an, Jim has completed two terms with the planning commission, and so, we have an award, like to recognize him, first of all, for his attendance, other than the two month vacation, which I always thought we should have gone down and conducted our meetings with you.
We could have done that.
I think you've done a, a good job in asking questions and researching the different requests that we receive and encouraging discussion amongst the, the planning commission. And so, I'd like to thank you, you know, for your service to the community. This is from the mayor, and it reads, "Planning commission presents this recognition award to James Hogan for service to the community by serving on the commission as a member from January of 2014 to December 2019. Given this 19th day of December 2019, signed, Robert J. Boyzeman."
Well, thank you. Would you like to see what it is? All right, thank you all.
Nice job.
Yes. Well, I've done, and I guess I'll have to say, I thank you to all of the people on the commission, because you've all been involved, and that's part of what happens here. A lot of times, people get on the commissions and they kind of just kind of sit back, and all of you have been involved, and that's, that's a good thing. It was an excellent team to work with, so I will still keep, keep in touch, and I'll still be around, so. But it was good for me, and thank the staff for all the work that you guys do. You really put some good reports for us together, makes everybody else look good, so, thank you. With that, is there anything else that, if not, meaning adjourned?
Nice job, Larry.